All right, good evening, everyone. Are we all set? Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, November 18th, 2021, 6:00 PM meeting of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. I call the meeting to order. As a preliminary matter, I have a couple of administrative responsibilities to carry through first, so I will do that before we call, uh, before we start. So we have a hybrid participation meeting, which means people can call in via the phone if they are not comfortable attending the town hall in a public meeting, and then possibly board is here. So allow me to read through my script. As a preliminary matter, my name is Robert Tatro. I'm the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. In an effort to reduce background noise, I'm going to ask that all of you please mute your phones at this time and only unmute if you want to speak. Also, if you have any electronic devices in the audience, if you could please put those down to a silent mode. Permit me to confirm that all the members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Vice Chair Michael Maron.
Present.
Mr. Chacola.
Present.
Mr. Cussy.
Present.
Ms. Roach.
Present.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bush.
I'm here, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have all members either present in the town hall or they can hear me via the remote access. So town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Building Commissioner Caleb Moody.
Here.
DDIS land use clerk Ginger Bootow.
He's here.
Thank you. Okay, so good evening. This is the open meeting for the Auburn zoning, uh, Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals on Thursday, November 18th, 2021, now called to order at 6:00 PM. The meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely, as I've already stated, per Governor Baker's executive order on March 12th, 2020, and extended on June 16th, 2021. For this meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals is convening either by person or participation with the public. Uh, for the public to join, if you are at home and you want to join by phone, please call 1-646-749-3112, and you will enter the access code 944-571-349. Or you can join via computer by logging onto the website GoToMeeting.com, and in the upper right corner, you'll have a join, um, prompt. It's 944-571-349. Remote access information has also been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. Accordingly, those members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, employees, and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the meeting. For meeting materials, all supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business and ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate minutes of the meeting. I, Robert Tatro, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name, provide comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name and address before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with any other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. The Chair will first ask the members of the public who wish to speak to identify the names and addresses only. Once the Chair has all, a list of public commentators, I will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. If we have any technical difficulties, the Chair suspends the meeting while attempts to resolve it are made, uh, and that is to ensure that we keep accurate minutes noting any disconnections and reconnections for the members. Okay, so we have, uh, well, first, let me stop by this. Can I, uh, get a motion to open?
The conference will now be recorded.
All right, that's okay. Um, so do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chacola. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Um, so as a roll call vote, just for a matter of clarity, uh, Vice Chair Maron, how do you vote?
I approve. But just for a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, we're opening the zoning board meeting, not in a particular hearing, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Mr. Chacola, how do you vote?
Prove.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Prove.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Um.
Thank you. And Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
And I vote to approve. So we actually have, the first two applicants on the agenda have requested continuations of the 6 o'clock application for Fazay Management Incorporated requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.2 and 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build 12 townhouses on property located at 262 Central Street, Auburn, Mass., map 56 parcel 82. Please note, this meeting is still open as it was continued from the 10/21/21, uh, meeting. It has not been closed as of, uh, yet. So do I have a motion to accept the applicant's request to continue to the December meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, um, as stated, to accept the decision.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. For purposes of a roll call vote, Mr. Maron, how do you vote, sir?
Approve.
Mr. Chacola, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Uh, Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
Um, I would vote to approve, but I would want to add a condition.
Okay, so we can discuss that with the membership. What would the condition be, please?
That they re-notice the butters. I don't think it's fair not to.
All right, let me check with that point of clarification. Um, to you, Caleb, I don't, do we, can we require that or do we need to require it? Please, sir?
It's nothing we could require by law. We could request that they re-notify the butters, but I don't know that it's going to be likely. Um, the hearing's going to be continued till 6:00 PM, same start time, Thursday of the month, but by law, we can't really condition that they re-notify the butters.
Okay. Ms. Roach, I'm not sure if you understood that, but according to Caleb Moody, we really don't have the authority to condition that right now because there's no, we haven't moved forward on the hearing yet.
Okay, then I vote to deny the motion.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, and I vote to approve. So with that being said, the 6:00 PM, uh, meeting, Fazay Management requesting a special permit under 3222 and 4351 will officially be continued until the December meeting. At this time, that hearing from December 21 will remain open. If anybody has any public comments, concerns, or would like to review any of the documents associated with that, you can certainly contact the Department of Inspection Services at the town hall. So to move on, we have the 6:05 PM applicant Clara Agreta requesting a variance under section 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for front setbacks on property located at 17 Rock Ave., Auburn, Mass., map 24 parcel 116. And the applicant has also requested a continuation to the December meeting. Do I have a motion to, uh, on the floor regarding the applicant's request to continue the December meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have a question. Do we, do we even need to do anything because we don't have an open hearing for this person?
Well, I think because it was on the agenda and it's been publicly posted, we have to agree to either approve or deny. I think we have to be able to.
Through the Chair, if I may.
Yeah, please.
So the process would be for the board to take a vote to open the hearing, and then after that, take a vote to accept or deny.
Okay, so my first motion would be to have a motion to open the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Again, a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacola?
Prove.
Mr. Cussy?
Prove.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
Thank you, and I also vote to approve. So again, uh, this applicant has requested a continuance to the December meeting, and because it is, uh, have been advertised, um, and a butters have been notified, the meeting has to be, uh, the hearing has to be open. Do I have a motion on the applicant's request?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to extend as requested.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chacola, uh, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacola?
Prove.
Mr. Cussy?
Prove.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
Thank you, and I also vote to approve. So again, uh, this applicant has requested a continuance to the December meeting, and because it is, uh, have been advertised, um, and a butters have been notified, the meeting has to be, uh, the hearing has to be open. Do I have a motion on the applicant's request?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to extend as requested.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chacola, uh, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacola, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. So the 6 o'clock and the 6:05, um, have been continued to December meeting. The 6:05 applicant Clara Agreta requesting the variance under section 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for the front setbacks on property located at 17 Rapp Rock Ave., Auburn, Mass., map, uh, map 24 parcel 116. That hearing will remain open. Again, if anybody has any comments, concerns, or issues with that particular application, you may contact the Department of Inspection Services, uh, and they will steer you in the right direction to determine what you need to have done. Okay, with that being said, we are now at, right on time. All right, so we are at 6:10 PM. Uh, I'm sorry, do I have a motion, uh, do we need a motion to close, really? Not really, right? No. So we're going to move on to our third hearing, and this is the 6:10 PM applicant Buckley Home Improvement requesting a special permit under section 9.3.12 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build an in-law apartment on property located at 137 Brynmar Ave., map 32 parcel 185. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacola, how do you vote?
Prove.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Prove.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. The hearing is now open. If the applicant is present, if you could please approach the microphones, give us your name and address, and give us an overview of what electoral coverage, please.
My name is Leon Buckley. Um, address is 80 Rossen Street in Leicester, Mass. Um, we propose to build an in-law apartment at 137 Brynmar, um, basically for the, for the owner's relative to live in, kind of at the, at the end of her life there, so she wants to be close to family.
I'm sorry, hold on one second, please.
That's the honor, son.
Hello?
I muted.
Okay, so we had some pretty substantial interference in the background.
Good business.
So for the folks that are actually in, calling in remotely, whatever is in the background at your residence or the, your location is going to be picked up by these microphones and is going to be transmitted to our direction. So if you could just go ahead and mute until you are interested in speaking, and then we can have you turn it on, and that way we can continue the, uh, the hearing, hopefully without interruption. And it's okay, we've had it happen before, it's, it's kind of common, but we try to minimize it. So, go ahead, sir, please.
Again, uh, Leon Buckley with Buckley Home Improvement, I propose to build a one-car garage and, uh, in-law apartment at 137 Brynmar, um, and it's for the owner's, uh, family member to, to live in.
Okay. Uh, do we have any butters that are present this evening that would like to speak on this hearing? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Um, I'm going to move it over to the, the members of the board and allow them to ask the questions. Mr. Maron, I yield the floor to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for being here tonight.
Sure, no problem.
The, um, the plans that we have before us, I just wanted to confirm. So, um, I'm, I'm drawing attention to the architectural drawings that speak directly to the proposed property showing the garage.
Right.
Um, and then just behind that, um, I believe is the, the apartment that you're proposing, correct?
Correct, correct. And that, that part on the left there with your left hand, that is the existing house.
That's existing.
Yes, existing house there.
I did have an opportunity to view the property, um, and get my bearings. So as, as the property sits now, all of that construction will be added on to the, as you're looking at it, to the right-hand side.
That's correct.
Of the property. Okay. Um, and as I estimate, it's the square footage of the apartment specifically, that wouldn't include the square footage of the garage.
That's correct.
Correct.
The garage, uh, is proposed to just be an unfinished, uh, garage.
Unfinished space. Okay, very good. And then just a final question, if I may. I see one main, um, point of egress on the diagram, um, just to the rear of the existing home where the garage, so essentially to the far left of the garage, behind the, behind the jog. Um, is there a second means of egress directly out of the apartment that you're proposing?
Um, the, the one that goes directly to the outside and then one goes in through the garage.
Okay, so the second is in through the garage.
Correct. And that is all connected to the existing house as well.
Okay. We, we may come back to that second point of egress, um, just to confirm the viability needing to that, that exit, the apartment to the outside directly.
I mean, all the windows are, are egress windows as well, if, if that makes a difference to you.
I'd like to comment on that. Um, there is going to have to be another, seem to be, uh, I know they have two in the first half, so they have to be as remote as realistically possible to each other. The issue is they're both in sync, but the one of those windows is going to have to be Amanda or.
Okay.
They have to be remote to each other. So it's going to be garage. You have another idea now.
Okay. So we'll just, uh, yeah, we can go through that, but we'll, we'll just go ahead and, yeah, we'll go ahead and swap out one of the windows in the living room.
Yeah.
Or just the regular 32 door.
Yep.
So, uh, Ms. Roach, I'm not sure if you heard that conversation, but, um, Vice Chair Maron brought up an issue about the means of egress. Um, one was discussed by the applicant to bring, uh, would be a means of egress through the garage door. Um, it was a point of order through the Chair to discuss the fact, um, Mr. Maron brought up that we may, uh, have questions regarding that, and for clarification purposes, Caleb explained it would need to have two direct points of egress, and they were discussing that, um, the applicant had stated that there was, all the windows were, um, like, you know, uh, full-size windows that would be, you know, utilized to be able to be egress windows, uh, and the discussion has been that one of those windows will have to become what they refer to as a man door or, you know, a walk-through door. So I'm not really sure if you heard that because the microphone wasn't really that close.
Yes, I did hear. Thank you for the clarification, and I, and obviously during the building permit process, that's something Caleb would individually work on with the applicant should they be approved.
Right, okay, great. I honestly, just because I saw that he had his mask on, and I wasn't really sure if, uh, it went through, so that's actually good to know. It's, the microphones are doing their job, so. Uh, Mr. Maron, do you have any further questions?
Just one final question for the record, Mr. Chairman. Um, so do you have, um, just an estimate on where the, you're expecting the apartment to land, square footage?
Um, I don't think I have that information on the year.
No worries. I mean, I did some quick calculations, but I essentially took the, the squared space for egress all the way back to the kitchen area and, uh, left and right, excluding the, um, excluding the garage, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What did we come up with? Um, I had just over five.
Yeah.
I had, yeah, I just had, just had not, not quite five and a half, I think 5:30 and change, I think. But, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't have anything further.
I, I came up with 5:40 just to round it off.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chacola, and I apologize if I stole some of your funding of the egress.
Not at all. Not at all.
All right. Uh, Mr. Chacola, do you have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
Not at this time. Mr. Maron covered what I was going to ask.
Thank you. Mr. Cussy?
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
No questions to me.
Okay, thank you. Um, I also, these gentlemen always vet the, and ladies always vet the, uh, applicants pretty well, so I don't have any questions either. Uh, do you have anything else you'd like to state to the board?
I did want to just, uh, respond to your question about the square footage is what I have here on the plot plan. I don't know if you guys have this, but, uh, 551, 551 is a good estimate for square footage on, on the apartment.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? I'll just do one more. There's no other, uh, butters that are concerned or have any questions regarding this, this hearing? Day hearing, none, seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Oh, go ahead. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, this is Steve Jones.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Um, so I, I did a little math, uh, based on the drawing here, and it looks like the living space is maybe 672 square feet. Does that sound like it's likely right?
These, we're getting in the 540 range, right?
Yes, about 551.
All right, just one, okay. We're all under 700, so I guess that's, um, that's what really matters here.
Right, I agree.
All right, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so let me see here. Um, so, Mr. Jones, you know what? While we're at it, uh, Ms. Bush, do you have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, so do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Okay, as a roll call vote, Mr. Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Chacola?
Prove.
Mr. Cussy?
Prove.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I approve. Do we have any discussion between the board members? Okay, so hearing none, seeing none. Do I have a motion on the 6:10 PM applicant Buckley Home Improvement requesting a special permit under section 9312 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build an in-law apartment on property located at 137 Brynmar Ave., Auburn, Mass., map 32 parcel 185?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm, I'm going to make a motion and then, um, just a quick comment, if I may.
Please.
Uh, so a, a motion to approve with standard conditions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and my comment would be of full faith in the building department to work through permitting process to address the egress, uh, but as I think confirmed, well within our bylaw as far as the size of the apartments and no concerns whatsoever.
Right, okay. Excellent. So, uh, do I have a second on Mr. Maron's motions and concerns? Thank you very much. So roll call vote. Um, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacola, how do you vote?
Prove.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Prove.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve.
And I vote to approve. So you're all set? Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, you can reach out to Caleb, and, uh, he'll guide you through the rest of the permitting process and make sure all your plans are all squared away, so good luck.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll let these, uh, applicants clear out for a minute, and we are at time-wise, pretty good. Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, as we're proceeding, a motion to close, you know?
That's what I was waiting for. I was letting them walk away.
Apologies. Not very good, not very good.
No, and I, I appreciate the reminders. I genuinely do.
Uh, Mr. Chacola was keeping me honest.
So do I have a motion to close the 6:10 hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Thank you very much. Second, all right.
Mr. Chairman?
To the Chair. We already took that vote.
No, we voted to approve.
We voted both.
We did vote. We voted for the Senate.
We closed the public portion of the hearing.
You're good.
Okay, all right. That sounds good.
We did double duty then.
Anytime we can skip past some, uh, some red tape, I'm more than happy to do that.
Yeah.
So with that being said, we're going to move on to the 6:15 applicant James Buregard requesting a special permit under section 93126 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an in-law apartment on property located at 28 Perry Ave., Perry Street, excuse me, Auburn, Mass., map 25 parcel 63. The motion to open the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacola, how do you vote?
Prove.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Prove.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. The hearing is now open. Uh, you can see the applicants are seated to my left, so I'm going to yield the floor. Um, Mr. Mr. Buregard, I presume?
Yes.
If you just want to go ahead and over and explain everything, and I'll have the board.
Mr. Chairman, uh, as, if I might.
You might.
Um, in the interest of full disclosure, uh, the petitioner does work for the town of Auburn. I also have a seasonal part-time job with the town of Auburn. There is, with, with the petitioner's petition, there is no financial, uh, interest whatsoever between Mr. Buregard and myself.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I see no reason why the hearing can't move forward as it is. Um, there is no financial interest. It's a part-time position, um, and so thank you very much for disclosing that. I appreciate it. Okay, so please, Mr. Buregard, go ahead.
Good evening. James Buregard, 28 Perry Street, my wife Donna. Um, we're looking for a special permit, uh, for the addition that's already on our house. for a special permit uh for the addition that's already on our house. Um it's been there for 18 years. And we went to refinance, and this is what they told us we had to do. They seem to think that it's uh an in-law, but it's been an addition for 18 years.
Okay.
So this is, this is why we're here.
All right, we can move on that one. Um so I'm just going to go ahead then. We don't have any, anybody else sitting, but do we have anybody that's called in, any of butters that might be interested in making comments on this hearing? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Mr. Maron, I yield the floor to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
Before I ask a, a direct question, if I might bring Caleb forward um for a quick question. Um so this applicant came forward um under 9312.6 for an, an accessory apartment, correct?
Through the Chair, 9312.6 is a, is a section in the bylaw that allows determining of existing apartments that do date the accessory apartment by law.
Okay.
This apartment was built prior to the accessory apartment by law. It was terminated. It was inspected. Um I have no issues with.
Thank you for that ver- very much. Um and, and so the only question I have for the app, thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
The only question I have for the applicant, if I may, is, is uh as far as means of egress. I did have an opportunity to view the property, and I must say, after I did, selfishly, I ran home and started picking up my own leaf. It is one of the finest kept properties in, in town.
Thank you.
It's an absolutely beautiful piece of property. Uh but uh, but not to be cheeky, aside, it means of egress. There is a side set upstairs that goes up to the apartment on the right side.
Right.
And is, is there a second uh means of egress to the apartment?
Yes, down into, through the garage area. And actually, there's a third that goes from the addition into the main house.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Chacola?
Um I have no questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Cussy?
No question.
Ms. Roach?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Sometimes.
Thank you. Um Ms. Bush?
I have no questions.
Great. And I don't either. I understand this is really more or less for, you'd have an approval for the, your financial insituation. It really doesn't apply to the town. Again, just for the folks at home that might be paying attention to this meeting, um this is really a administrative paperwork uh situation for the homeowner. Um and it was, the, the addition was built prior to the approval of um the updated bylaw, so really this does not affect or have any impact on the town whatsoever. So with that being said, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um Mr. Chacola? Huh, excuse me. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacola, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve.
And I vote to approve. So you're all set.
All right.
Caleb, it'll get you the rest of the paperwork to be.
I thought it was to close the hearing, but we, we would actually need to vote on the hearing uh before.
Oh, I, I apologize. You're right. I'm getting ahead of myself.
I am also, I am also optimistic that it'll be approved.
So again, I apologize. So do I have a motion, or do we have a motion on the 6:15 PM applicant James Buregard requesting a special permit under section 9312.6 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an in-law apartment on property located at 28 Perry Street, Auburn, Mass., map 25, parcel 63.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with standard conditions.
There we are. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll get to the, to the meat and potatoes here. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacola, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I actually have one question to share and maybe Caleb can comment on this.
Okay.
Um I do approve. Uh I do approve, but just as a matter of clarification, especially for the applicant, um my understanding is that this special permit will apply to them and them only. And when they do, in fact, whenever that is, go to the house, that permit does not transfer to the next uh owner. And I just want to be sure they are clear of that. Um and if I'm wrong, people are happy to be corrected. Um but I just want to make sure that even though the town didn't allow, as that does not default, they transfer the property to someone else.
Through the Chair, that, that is correct. All the special permits for these apartments are, are specific to the owner. When, when they sell the property to anyone, it doesn't